I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Rattone City Commission. Could we have a roll call, please, Michael Ann?
Mayor Segada.
Present.
Mayor Protam Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavis.
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Present.
Do you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements tonight, we have our next regular commission meeting Tuesday, June 23rd, 2:00 26 PM here in the chambers. Also at this time, I think we would like to do a little recognition of our city clerk, Ms. Michael Ann Antonucci. Michael Ann was nominated for Clerk of the Year Award here in the state, and she won. This was the 28th year that the New Mexico Municipal Clerks and Finance Officers Associations had the award and an honoree, and Michael Ann was named Clerk of the Year. The judges for this event were the current Clerks Association Executive Board Officers, and we got the pleasure of doing, presenting during their annual training last Thursday on the web, so it was kind of cool. We had Jason help us out, me and Scott were there, and we presented the plaque to Michael Ann in front of all of her peers and that, and it was really good. Some of the qualifications for that community service, which is outstanding contributions to municipality, which may or may not be directly related to her duties, you know, Michael Ann is very active throughout the community. Past president of the Business Professional Women's Organization, and she's still very active in that. She in addition runs also our, and when we have elections, she is in charge of the forum and the discussion and all of that. And just her professional service, you know. I don't sometimes wonder what we would do if Michael Ann wasn't here, because I know she has saved me a couple of times, and I'm sure she's saved all of us a few times. But at this time, I'd like Mr. Berry to say a few words, if he would.
Thank you, Barry, Commission. I am proud to talk about our city clerk, Ms. Antonucci, tonight. I can tell you that I believe there are 106 municipal agencies in New Mexico, and it doesn't matter if you're a village, it's 100 citizens or less, or you're one of the municipal, the metro areas. Regardless of the size of them, all 106 really depend on their clerk and finance officer. That's probably the most important position that you have. And I think that, you know, every mayor and every administrator had probably nominated their clerk. And so I think that's acknowledged something that we've known for a long time, that we have really one of the best in the state here in Rattone. And it helps me do my job that, when I started with this, the commission expressed to me that some of the goals were to have clean audits, and we have had that consistently every year. We, you know, you don't have a lot of drama with financial reports being submitted and budgets and audit reports, and that's the finance officer side. But some time ago, we did combine the finance officer job with the city clerk, and all of that went on Michael Ann, and those are two really big separate tasks there. And Michael Ann really works at both of those hard. She's really one of the most professional and dedicated people that I work with, and I take advantage of Michael Ann around the city of Rattone. I hold her up as the example of dedication and professionalism around here, something that, you know, other people can aspire to. And so I think this recognition is long overdue. You had mentioned, in addition to performing a really demanding job here at the city of Rattone, Michael Ann's community service, and she has been very deeply involved in community service. Mayor, you had mentioned a couple of the things, and I'll probably repeat that, but we have a very successful J-Jack organization here, something we talk about a lot, Juvenile Justice Advisory Committee. I can tell you that when I started here, I told Michael Ann, I don't know that that's the responsibility of the city of Rattone. It's a great program. I think it should take place in Rattone, but we're a basic services, small municipal organization with a small budget. And Michael Ann said, no, I'm going to make this thing work, and she has. And it's another thing that has worked smoothly. It's an effective program. There are a couple of people that we could talk about that have made that successful, but I know Michael Ann is just, from our perspective, taking that on and made it happen. A lot of other people would say, well, you know, I'm glad not to have that responsibility. But Michael Ann told me that that was going to work, and it hasn't worked. And so I think that's one of the things I see. You've mentioned her activities with the professional businesswomen of New Mexico. She's not just, you know, a member of that. She served as the local president of that and the state president of that organization as well. Those are demanding tasks. You mentioned the candidate forum. Michael Ann organizes and moderates really before every local election, the candidates' forum, and that's important for a lot of people to go to the S.H.I.E.L.D. and hear what the candidates have to say. I know a lot of you have sat up on the stage during the candidates' forum and answered the tough questions, and that's valuable for the community. And then I would mention that Michael Ann has been involved in the Colfax County Relay for Life and the Walk Against Domestic Violence, and that's a lot of community service for someone who is extremely busy at her job. And I'm glad that we're, we've got a little additional staffing in the office now, a little help for Michael Ann, but boy, during this time, she has really taken on an important role and really succeeded at it. So, Michael Ann, thank you for everything that you do.
No, thank you. I can't tell you how honored I am to have even just been nominated, let alone to receive this award. So I really appreciate your confidence in me and your support over the years. Like I said, I was quite shocked the other day when they started to read the bio, and then I thought, wow, I think they're talking about me. So I was ready to write down the Clerk of the Year, their name, and as they kept reading, I thought, I think they're talking about me. So like I said, I'm just extremely honored, and, you know, I, the other day, did thank some of my other fellow clerks, because over the years, they've mentored me and they've been there for me to assist me when I was new at this. And so, you know, I attribute a lot of my success to them as well, and just the Clerks and Finance Officers Association, and the training that the municipal league provides to clerks. And so, you know, it's outstanding, and it's helped contribute to my success. So I really do appreciate.
Well, it was long overdue.
And you know, all of us have seen this. If you come down here on a Sunday or a holiday, and that gum, you come in, there's her vehicle, and you know she's in here working, and this is continually, and we're proud of you and we appreciate that.
And for everybody, you can take a look at it as you leave this evening. It's a very nice plaque, very, very well deserved. All righty, at this time, we will take comments from the general public. Is anyone here wishing to address the commission? Sir, if you'd like to step up to the podium and give us your name, please?
My name's Joel Sanderson. One question I've got, however, we had them on COVID-19 as far as opening businesses. They'll be opening here pretty quick for the fourth. So I just wondered if just follow the same guidelines?
We're following the guidelines as put out to us by the governor at this time. Mr. Berry, would you like to further comment?
Yeah, Mayor, I would just comment that really there's only one standard out there. That is the governor's executive order and what you see coming through the New Mexico Department of Health. City of Rattone does not have any separate requirements, guidelines. You know, we try to help businesses and communicate that to them if there are questions, but it's really, and we have, you know, folks available to assist any local business that's, you know, has questions on how to comply with this, but we don't have separate standards. We just try to be a resource to businesses to, we want to see them open, we want to see businesses operate, and we try to help them in any way that we can, but not really in an enforcement role. You know, that's really a state function right now, and, you know, understanding of the governor's order is the only standard there is.
Okay. Well, that answers that question. The other question I have, we're trying to open a website, set up a website, and we're wondering if we, as long as we don't sell to people in Rattone, like we can't sell based on the state's regulations on the website. Because the way it is now, we can only sell about a third of what the state says we can sell. And I'd like to see if we can change that ordinance back like it was.
Not sure I follow for fireworks. I'm not familiar with how that, the state's ordinance reads on that, Joel.
I got a copy of it, I can leave it with you.
Okay.
But as far, as far as I know, the city ordinance says we can't sell nothing that goes over 10 feet, everything that stays on the ground.
Right.
My experience is the stuff that goes up in the air goes out before it hits the ground.
Oh, and I believe that's the state ordinance as well as anything over 10 feet.
This is the state. The state fire marshal says I can sell everything that's legal within the state.
Right.
You can buy that stuff in Clayton, Las Vegas. I know there's a place in between Santa Fe and Las Vegas you buy it, and people are buying it everywhere else.
Well, I was under the impression that the fireworks, I'm a proponent of fireworks shows personally, but I was under the presumption that it was the state fire marshal that did this, it's not the city ordinance at all.
Right.
The state fire marshal doesn't have a problem with this.
Or the state, the state of New Mexico is the one that put out the ordinance of what could be used and what was illegal, not a city ordinance, that I'm aware of.
I'm following, I'm talking about the state itself, talking to the state fire marshal.
Yeah, I mean.
That I don't know why, well, I know I got changed, but I don't know why, really.
Yeah, I mean, we are locked into what the state ordinance says.
It was always doing, basically.
Right, you know.
Yeah, we just got tired of fighting back in the late 90s, mid 90s.
And to get this changed, this is something we'd probably have to bring up with our legislators and that, with Mr. Campos and Mr. Chatfield. We can definitely have them address it, but there, at this point, there's nothing we as a city can do to change the state ordinance.
Well, can we follow the state ordinance?
I would say you're retired to call it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But.
Then I can sell whatever the state says.
Mr. Berry, you want to?
Mayor, Commissioner, I think that we should probably take this under advisement and do a review, maybe with city attorney and, you know, with the fire department and police department. I'm not really confident in saying, here's our final answer.
Well, I understand that.
You know, state statute versus city ordinance, but I know we're in that time of year. And so I think we better be very deliberate, you know, in how we handle this, and Mr. Sanderson, I will definitely, you know, get a response to you. I would say that later on, we were going to talk about drought, dry conditions, wildfire. You know, I think that as a city, we need to be kind of deliberate, and a lot of these requirements on safety and safe fireworks, whether it's local ordinance or state statute, really come from just persistent drought conditions. And so it's something we'll work on immediately, we'll take under advisement, get with you, and, you know, we'll follow up with you. You've got to, I don't have all the answers here tonight, so I'll have to work on that.
It sounds like there's a question of whether you can sell it on your website or not, if you can't sell it within city limits, and that's kind of your main question?
Right.
One of them.
Yeah.
But there, I've got over, well, for instance, every supplier, I can only buy about one-third of what they sell according to the city of Rattone. And there's probably someone in the neighborhood of 25 states that have the same statute the state does of New Mexico that I know of, Missouri, Alabama, Mississippi, Texas, Kansas, Wisconsin, Washington, South Dakota, Oklahoma, Texas, New Mexico, Nevada.
Well, we'll take a look, we'll have a look at the, our ordinance along with what it says with the state statute.
Well, one of my points is they're driving and getting them anyway, and I've been listening to them for several weeks now.
Sure. We all know that it happens, but for us to go out and say, go ahead and do it.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I would just add that, you know, any regulation by the city, first of all, is limited to Rattone, but we have no intention of limiting a business from doing business. We're strictly looking at the potential for harm to, you know, something locally, so.
Well, I understand that.
I think we see, we do see illegal fireworks using town, but, you know, our guys are busy out there chasing these a lot of times too, and there's a risk that goes with that, and I think a offender would have a liability, the city certainly would have a liability if we see, you know, a fire event from that, and that, you know, can concern innocently enough.
My argument is that the stuff that goes up in the air, not, to me, it's safer from preventing the fire than the stuff that stays on the ground.
Well, I'm just saying, we're not trying to, you know, stop from doing business. It's the safety aspect of it, I think we have a responsibility for, and so, you know, we're looking for a safe way to do it.
But to my knowledge, I've never had anyone seriously hurt that I've told them to call over the years.
Sure, sure. We'll look into it, see what it, it's saying. I'm still not, kind of foggy on this whole one-third sales thing, I don't understand that.
Well, I just wanted to bring it up.
We'll take a look at it and see what we got.
Okay.
All righty?
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move into the business items. Item 6A, approve the May 28, 2020 regular commission meeting minutes and the June 1, 2020 special meeting minutes. You all have those in your packets?
Mr. Mayor, there was one correction, item J on the May 26 minutes. The RFP committee should have been Mayor Protam Schuster, so I agree with that suggestion. And other than that, I would make a motion to approve the minutes from both meetings.
Second? We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from both meetings. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item B, deliberate and act on ratification of, excuse me, union contract between the city of Rattone and the Rattone Police Officers Association. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, myself and Chief Garcia have represented the city commission and the city of Rattone in collective bargaining negotiations with the Rattone Police Officers Association. It's been a weird time, but we've started negotiating in February, and then there were some lapses of time in between there when we had some other things going on. They were busy, we were busy, there were COVID-related things, and so it's taken a while. Originally, we would like to have this to you, you know, in April or May, but we do have an agreement between the city of Rattone and Rattone Police Officers Association for your consideration tonight. Rattone Police Officers Association has voted on and ratified the agreement. My recommendation to the commission is your ratification of the agreement, and the basic terms of the agreement I'll describe now. What we have anticipated is a contract with RPOA for four years, which commence on July 1st of 2020, and then run through the end of the fiscal year in 2024. My goal in approaching this, and of course, we can talk about two things in collective bargaining, really working conditions and then financial related terms, and so I think we did some cleanup on the working condition part of the agreement, no major changes in that, but there were some things that were specific to the last term, just some general cleanup. We learned that the, I would also state that included in the agreement is your police officers below the rank of sergeant, and then the telecommunications officer. And I had earlier made the mistake of calling them dispatchers, and I was corrected on that. So you see telecommunications officer in the agreement. And so the thing to talk about really is then the financial terms of the agreement. And with both police officers and telecommunications officers, what my proposal to you would be under this four-year agreement, and let me digress a little bit, I would tell you that one of my goals here, and I thank the chief and staff here, and I believe the commission also, is that we're competitive in the terms that we offer to all employees, and specifically we're competitive in the, in hiring police officers. And you know it's a competitive environment out there. Some of the larger agencies are offering bonuses and really raising the pay in order to fill their needs, and it's a very specialized job. And so we've had issues over the years with fully staffing our police department. We're short four positions right now, I believe, for police officers, if we're fully staffed as far as the dispatch center, but that's the challenge. And so we want to make sure that we're paying a competitive package here, including the wage and the fringe benefits to officers, and we really took a look at that. We're not the highest, I'd say we're kind of middle in the pack with some of our peers. I'm really excluding some of the larger metro agencies and state police when I look at that, but we did look at a lot of New Mexico cities that are our size, and I would say we are competitive. We're not the highest, but we're, we offer a pretty good package, and we're in the top one-third tier, I would say. So with that in mind, the recommendations that I've got for you are based on maintaining that competitive status. We do see a fair amount of turnover with our police department, that's for different reasons, not exclusively related to our pay, but there are a lot of different reasons. Number one is just a very tough job. So what I'm recommending to the commission, that effective July 1 and running for the next fiscal year, we would have an increase of 1.6% in our existing pay level for officers and telecommunications officers. There in the contract, you see different levels for both professions. And then through the four years, we go to an increase of 2.25%, 2%, and 2.5% in year four. So let's bounce around a little bit, that's just the nature of collective bargaining, that's kind of the back and forth, that's where we wound up. The other terms of the contract, the financial terms, are consistent with the expiring contract with the exception of two things. I would refer you to page 15, we have section 29, Special Teams Pay Incentive. We list four special teams there, K-9, Field Training Officer, Crime Scene Investigations and Firearms Officer, and we've raised those for the incentive pay from $1,000 to $1,250 for those members that participate in that. Additionally, I've recommended a nominal pay in the telecommunicator officer's clothing allowance. It was pointed out to me that it really has, was not adequate under the old contract to meet the dress requirements for that profession, and we did agree to a nominal increase in the clothing allowance. We wanted to wind up at a place where they didn't have to really go to their wages to pay for clothing, but they weren't really making, you know, extra money off of that either. So I think we wound up with a good agreement there. I'll hold up there and answer any questions that you have about the agreement.
I think it's, from what I read, looks like a pretty good deal, and to get four years out of it is really very good.
That's excellent.
I would say, you know, with our POA, it was, it was a good negotiation. They negotiated a very high level, very high level of professionalism and conduct, and I told them this in the, in the meeting there, and I'll say that here, I'm really proud of our, our police, our police department, and I did relay that the commission had a lot of pride in them too. I think we have an excellent police department, and I think their level of dedication and professionalism is, is pretty high.
Absolutely.
Tough job.
It's a tough job. And just to note, when I first came on the commission, I did ask the chief, you know, do our guys get training on, on dealing with those difficult situations and those snarky people that can sometimes push your buttons, and they do, and he had a, I forgot the name of that training, but it, it was an appropriate kind of fun name.
Snarky People Training.
Snarky People Training. And so I just think it's well noted that, and I think over the few years I've been on the commission, there've been a couple of incidences where it's been evident that they have taken that training and are using that training.
I think their judgment is pretty sound, and I, I think we got a great group there now, and I think they do a great job for our community. It's a very tough job.
Definitely.
Very, very demanding, very challenging.
Absolutely. Working with the force they have, like you said, we're four officers short, means a lot of overtime, a lot of long hours, outstanding job.
Well, I would echo that with telecommunicators too, that's a stressful job. You never know what's coming in on the, on the call. They do a great job, and they're very dedicated, and they're very professional, and we're proud of our telecommunicators as well.
Absolutely. Good job.
I make a motion to ratification of the union contract between the city of Rattone and the Rattone Police Officers Association.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to ratify the contract between the city of Rattone and the Rattone Police Officers Association. Is there any further discussion? Michael Ann, could we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Segada?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Item C, deliberate and act on Resolution 2020-38, adoption of required community development block grant, CDBG, annual certifications and commitments. Mr. Phillips, I believe, is up on this one.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is just another step in the
the federal requirements into a single set of documents that consist of this resolution, 2020-38. That's a required template that they provide, as well as the attached Exhibit 1-Z required, CDBG federal requirements. And you can see the subcategories of this plan involve some things that make sense, some that maybe not. Citizen participation, fair housing, residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance, Section 3, and procurement. As CDBG is a nationwide HUD program, elements like fair housing and residential anti-displacement apply to a lot of what HUD does in the CDBG program, but not specifically to our project. Our project is a street and drainage infrastructure project without a housing component. But nonetheless, these are required elements of federal provision that they would like us to pass and move forward. And some of it is applicable. Citizen participation deals with how you conduct public hearings prior to your application project, process, post-application public hearings, and just how you notify the public of what you're doing with CDBG funds. Fair housing, that's a requirement that we have that resolution, even though this isn't a housing project. And especially procurement, we're signifying that we're going to follow the New Mexico procurement code. Our code is actually a little stricter that the city itself has adopted, but this just certifies at a minimum that we would handle that. The rest of the document has just the individual objective. And as you can see by and large, it says fill in the blank with City of Raton, but they all reference back to this original resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you had any, but wouldn't be able to modify the document even if I wanted to.
It was interesting reading, yeah.
It really was.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. Any questions for Mr. Berry or, or Mr. Phillips?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-38, required community development block grant, annual certifications and commitments.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-38. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you for your work.
Absolutely. Item D, deliberate and act on Resolution 2020-39, granting the city manager authority to FAA agreement for PAPI project at the Raton Municipal Airport. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, in past meetings, we had talked about our precision approach, plane indicator equipment. And the Commission had awarded that bid. And we had said at that time that this is different than really any other grant. And so we, we bid the project, we award it, and then we apply for federal funds after we award it. And so that's different. And we have submitted the grant application for funds. It's not really a question. We're just waiting for the grant agreement to arrive. And the resolution that you have, 2020-39, is something that FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, will require. And that would talk about the documentation during the project. And you would, with your consideration of the resolution, authorize the city manager to execute all documents related to the project. And it would direct staff to take action necessary to implement and fund the resolution of the project. So we remember that normally, we would have a 5% match on this project. However, under the current CARES legislation, FAA has said they would fund 100% of the project. And so we really don't have that, that local funding part, although it's a lot of work, again, on Michael Ann, to submit these requests for payment from federal aviation. But they will fund 100% of the project.
So just so you know, this resolution does not reflect that because Kent Fryer from Molsen Corbin did indicate he had to submit the application still showing the 95% FAA, five states, five cities. So I'm sure when we get the final grant agreement, it will clarify what our responsibility is. And we've been told that they would cover 100%. That is not reflected in this resolution.
Right. And I was thinking that might be the case, but thank you for clarifying that.
So we would expect to receive that grant agreement in short order. And we'll all notify you all when we have that and then proceed with the construction.
Very good. Well, we'll move to approve Resolution 2020-39, granting our city manager the authority to the FAA agreement for the PAPI project at Raton Municipal Airport.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-39, granting the city manager authority on this project for the PAPI system at the airport. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, deliberate and act on Resolution 2020-40, support of the Whittington Center. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, I'll discuss both items that we have coming up on the agenda here now with you. And so that's a resolution of support for operations of Whittington Center and also Fillmont Scout Ranch. And in your packet, you have two separate resolutions. I have tried to wordsmith those resolutions to reflect, I think, what the consensus might be. However, I bring it to you, Commissioners, and certainly if you want to work on any of that wording based on what your intent is here, I don't get my feelings hurt by that. However, what we're looking at really is that Raton has recognized the importance of an outdoor recreation economy. We have spent a lot of time over the past year establishing communications and partnership with state of New Mexico, state parks and economic development department as far as, as trying to improve that outdoor recreation economy in Colfax County. We've talked about a number of elements of that. Sugar Creek Canyon State Park really, and keeping up with what's going on in Colorado with Fisher Peak State Park. And it was kind of put on its ear by the COVID-19 shutdown. And so as we get into June, there's some unknown feelings, I guess, about where we're going with outdoor recreation in general and how that would affect two organizations that are extremely important to Colfax County, to the City of Raton and to other cities in Colfax County, and that's Fillmont Scout Ranch and Whittington Center. And so, Mayor, you've been very active in dealing with the mayor's group, communicating with the governor's office. I know there's been some specific discussion of these things in Sugar Creek Canyon State Park. And I have taken it upon myself to draft these resolutions to keep the conversation going, to let folks know, policymakers in Santa Fe, how important these are to Raton, how important they are to the area, not just the, the economy part of this, but they're really part of our, our history and our character. And I've attempted to communicate that here and just ask for continued dialogue. Of course, we recognize that the COVID virus, if you open things up and you bring people from all over the country, you increase the risk. And so we talk about COVID-safe practices in the resolution. And it's a, it's a balancing act between really getting back to some normal operations, operations that are important to us locally here, and protection of the public. And so I've attempted to do that in these resolutions. Like I say, I'll, I'll let the Commission look at the wording here. I would add that this really was driven by a proclamation that was distributed from the Village of Simron. You all have a copy of that here. And you can see their concern that Fillmont has announced they would be closed this summer. That's big to Fillmont operations. That's big to the Village of Simron. Fillmont has, in addition to a large seasonal staff, 80 full-time employees, year-round employees. It's a, it's a large employer for Colfax County and especially for the Village of Simron. It's a critical part of what we're trying to do with outdoor recreation. And it's a, it's a different year here in 2020. So we're trying to express our support and also get that support of the administration at state level. And I'll hold up there, Mayor and Commissioner.
And just to kind of elaborate some on what Scott, some of the discussions with the governor's office and the chief of staff, I was, had privy to Fillmont's plan. I think we did pass it off to you guys. I'm not sure. And from everything I could read, they were taking some extreme precautions and all of that. And when this was presented to the chief of staff and that, they quite honestly were, I thought, very glib about it. And I said, well, we don't need 9,000 people coming in at once and all of that. You're not going to have 9,000 people there in one place. There's been a total lack of common sense on some of this, in my opinion. That's my opinion. Same with the Whittington Center. When I brought up the Whittington Center, the first words out of the chief of staff's response was, well, the NRA is in litigation with the state of New Mexico. What does that have to have to do with the COVID virus? That just tells you where their train of thought is, in my opinion.
I have to agree with you. I was privy to the meeting in the Jersey. And it got handed to the mayor because him and Mr. Berry, they kept their cool. They didn't lose their temper, even though the chief of staff indicated that they basically, and this is my opinion, that they don't care what's going on up here. They're going to do what they're, what they're going to do. The proclamation from Simron on top of the two resolutions that we're doing, I think that they need to be in their ear constantly until it's, until it's a done deal. I really do.
You know, I, I think we could also talk to some people out of Vermaio, and they are feeling the same way. They're losing a lot of their summer.
Yeah.
They're not able to, to do much. And that's frustrating. I think Sugar Creek Canyon, we'd all love to see it open more. I mean, I know, I know there's concerns with people coming in. And yet I'm over in Trinidad, or Trinidad, and there are lines of cars from out of state and people lined up on the sidewalks.
Forty-five minutes in line at McDonald's this morning.
And whatnot. So, I mean, we've got a lot of people from out of state coming through here already. I mean, they're at the gas stations. They're, they're doing that. I can see how it's, and I've had, I've worked at Fillmont for many, many years. And, you know, there are ways that it can be done in small groups. And I'm sure that they had, I wasn't able to see the plan.
Are there 500,000 acres out there? Or how many acres is it?
Close to 500,000.
I think we do mention that in the resolution.
Yeah. And you're going to have, over the summer, you're going to have 9,000 scouts there. That's ridiculous that they're all going to, they're going to all be in.
Like I said, the
It's more like 30,000 through the summer.
Yeah. The plan was very well laid out. How they could, they had the right amount of adults to the right amount of kids. It was well thought out, well done. And one of their comments was, well, they don't have the medical facilities or the medical staffs. They've got their own little hospital out there for goodness sakes.
They have their own surgery lab. They have an infirmary.
There's just, like Mr. Chavez said, it just shows me that they really are going to do what they want to do. Regardless, this, this committee that I'm on, I think it's all show and tell. It was just created to appease certain, uh,
Political entities.
Political entities, the press, what have you.
Yeah, I wasn't really
Sorry to get sidetracked.
Privy to any of that. But was the Miners Colfax Medical Center on board with their plan? Because they are really
Yes, they did.
Part of their medical backup.
I believe, I believe the director there did sign a letter of
Support.
Support. I signed a letter of support. There were several letters of support. The county signed the letter of support.
Yeah.
Everyone was behind it, but it carried no, no weight.
I think it's hard for all of us after watching, you know, Simron suffer so much with the fire.
Right.
Their economy is having such a hard time.
It, and it's hard for this decision to come down the day after the governor was on the TV saying, wow, we're going to let these protesters go. Don't worry about any social distancing or anything. It's, it's okay. It kind of spits in the face of what they're telling us. My opinion, but. Mr. Berry, good job.
Thank you, Mayor. 140,000 acres.
Okay.
We did mention that, you know, there were past impacts from the U Park fire. And, you know, I think the concern expressed in the proclamation of the Village of Simron is that, you know, Fillmont operations may be destabilized by these couple of things happening back to back. That's a best concern.
Yeah. And it would be devastating to our community and all over New Mexico for them to close permanently.
Absolutely.
It really would.
Huge.
I would urge our clientele and our constituents to get your representatives in their ear and tell them to, tell the governor that this
Absolutely.
Can, so.
Absolutely. If you don't know how to get ahold of your, our representatives.
Call the mayor.
Call the, call the mayor. Call, call the mayor, call the City Commission, call Mr. Berry. We can, we can point you in the right direction.
You know, Mayor and Commissioner, back to the resolution regarding Whittington Center. I have heard from Commissioner Chavez that there is some new management at Whittington Center. And certainly, we intend to reach out and welcome the new manager to the area and, you know, try to develop that, that partnership with them, let them know of their importance to the city and to the community.
He has indicated to us that, that he wants to get a closer relationship with us than there was in the past.
Cool.
So I think that we should embrace that, too. With all that being said, I think we could do both Resolution 2040 and 41 at the same time. I'd make a motion to pass them both.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-40 and Resolution 2020-41. Is there any further discussion?
I just have one question. Is, so is it a done deal? Fillmont is not opening it all this summer? Is it completely done?
They made the announcement.
They made the announcement. And I think it's hard for them to turn on a dime when you're hiring over 1,000 staff.
Yeah.
So, but they do have, not that it's a big season, but they have a fall season. I mean, there, there are some things that can be done later in the year if they can.
And they have programs, too, that, the summer programs that would be after this besides that, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, deliberate and act on continuum of graduated sanctions agreement number 21-690-3200-208041. Twenty, how about 20841 between the City of Raton and Children, Youth and Families Department. I believe, Michael Ann, you're up on this one.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is similar to agreements that we've approved in the past with a few changes. The application process this year was to apply for a four-year grant. And so I believe if you turn to, I think it's the very last page. So on the very last page, we have the amount that we've been awarded. And so this agreement is for four years and it's for $474,600, which breaks out to be $118,650 per year. So the annual amount is significantly less than what we received this year, probably just slightly under $50,000 less. So despite it being a four-year contract, they are awarding less funds to the City of Raton. It is my understanding that several programs throughout the state didn't get funded at all.
Wow.
So, I mean, we are extremely grateful that they are offering this award to us, but it is at a lesser amount than we've been awarded in the past. The program would still be pretty much the same. We're proposing the girls' circle, boys' council. We're proposing the Girls Circle, Boys Council, which are direct youth services. And then, we also have the restorative justice. And so, we are soliciting requests for proposals for agencies to provide those services. And we usually try to bring those subcontracts back to you after the RFP with a recommendation for award and try to have everything in place by July 1st. So, we have kind of a pretty tight timeline here. But we would recommend approval of this agreement this evening, and then we could proceed with handling the subcontracts probably at the next meeting or the first meeting in July.
Okay. Any questions for Michael Ann?
This has been a great program.
It has been.
I will move to approve the agreement number 21-690-3200-20841 between the City of Raton and Children, Youth and Families Department.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to award the grant, to accept the agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment. You know, I do handle the financial side of administering this grant, because the City of Raton is the fiscal agent. We do have a local continuum board that really oversees the program as a whole. And then, the city employs a continuum coordinator, which you all know is Danielle Archileta. And I really want to commend her for the success of these programs, because in the years that she's been with us, I think the increases we've seen in the funding is directly related to her efforts in building those programs and the relationship that she has with the subcontractors that offer these services to the youth in our community. So, I just want to compliment Danielle and her hard work over the years.
Pass on the good work to her.
Yep.
Item H, deliberate enacted act on Resolution 2020-42. I believe this is the final budget adjustment for this fiscal year, number 15?
Uh, no.
Nope. Wrong. You led me wrong, Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commission, this is budget adjustment 15, but it is not the final. As you know, the end of the fiscal year is fast approaching. And so, as we close out the fiscal year, June 30, we do have until July 31 to do a final budget adjustment. So, I would anticipate definitely one more, if possibly not two, but probably just one more as part of our annual closeout and submission to DFA with our fourth quarter report, final budget, and final budget adjustments. So, you'll see that we have some line item adjustments. And then, also, I am recommending that we do a, this isn't a temporary transfer. This would be a transfer, an additional transfer in addition to what we've already made this year for the pool slash rec center fund. This is just kind of an estimate as to the amount of monies that we need to cover a revenue shortfall that is a result of the temporary closure of the facility due to the COVID-19 health emergencies. So, we've seen a, we'll probably see a decline this month in the grocery receipts, which they get a portion of that for operations. And then, obviously, the gate receipts, admittance will be down considerably in this fiscal year. So, I am recommending an additional transfer of $15,000. And then, other than that, everything else was line item adjustments. And then, on the solid waste fund and our landfill trust assurance, we're going to end up with 13 transfers this year, because we had to make two transfers in the month of July, because June's transfer didn't get transferred prior to the end of the fiscal year. So, that's the reason for that increase there. Is there any questions?
On the pool, the revenue shortfall, is that something perhaps we can recover through cares?
I would, I would definitely put that in the plan. And so, I think it's one of those things that, you know, we've been advised, keep track of costs related to COVID. And we'll see if there's an avenue for some reimbursement of that. That would be one of those things we would request reimbursement on. It is our plan when we get into the new fiscal year to bring some recommendations to the commission as far as fees associated with Aquatic Center. It's, again, one of the balancing acts where we don't want to, you know, overcharge for that. But we are providing a lot of general fund money to keep that operation going, and costs go up. And so, we'll, we'll, just to get you prepared for that, we'll talk about those fees. Jared has completed some analysis of that, and I want to get that to you and get your consideration on that. So, we'll, we'll plan for that in the near future.
Right. Any other questions for Mr. Berry? Or Michael Ann?
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2020-42, budget adjustment 15 fiscal year 20.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution number 2020-42, budget adjustment number 15 for fiscal year 20. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item I, city manager's report. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Comfortable, Mr. Chavez? I can report to the commission that we have been working on the affordable housing plan with North Central New Mexico Economic Development District. They have delivered a final plan. Colfax County is the lead agency on that plan, and the City of Raton did agree with Colfax County to share in the matching funds. There were some grant funds involved in that as well. So, Colfax County will consider the plan, an adoption of the plan, on June 22. After that takes place, I will bring that to the city commission for your consideration. So, we'll think about the first meeting in July to talk about the affordable housing plan. And I'll get that distributed to you so you can start looking at that. While I'm at it, I'll update you on a comprehensive plan. We will have a phone call on Friday. We're making some progress on that. We're reviewing some land use recommendations for the comprehensive plan. And then, we're talking about setting up a community meeting that will be conducted virtually. And so, we are looking at some software, go-to conference, I believe, at the Litback adjacent, but we're setting that up. That'll be a little different than what we did at the initial meeting at the convention center. But I really think that there's a possibility for more people to attend that would probably not go to the convention center and sit through one of those. So, we'll advise you and the community as to when that's set up, but that's in progress as well. We do anticipate completing the comprehensive plan this fall. I think we had some delays because of the shutdown here, but it's up and going again. We'll talk about the roofing work. We've talked about a little bit. Work has commenced at the Highlands Educational Building. You recall that that building was not covered by the insurance claim with hail damage. That's a different deal. So, we are paying for that out of general fund reserve. The contractor has started work on that this week, and we would expect that work will be completed by the end of June. We also have additional roofing that we're anticipating on the municipal building here, this building. The portion of the Aquatic Center and the Coopers Building, those are all membrane roofs. Those were damaged by hail and will be replaced under New Mexico Self Insurers Fund and their contractors. So, we've worked on that. We anticipate that work to start very soon. I can report to you that we have started limited operations at the Aquatic Center, the library and the visitors information center. They are open on a very limited basis under the guidance of the executive order and direction of the New Mexico Department of Health. But we are doing some operations at those buildings. I'll report to you on the build application. That is the new transportation program for, through the federal government. We have participated in a build application through the City of Trinidad related to rail improvements through the states of Kansas, Colorado, and New Mexico. That application is submitted. The Raton City Commission did agree to fund $12,500 in matching funds if that is successful. The total application submitted is $17 million for those improvements. So, that grassroots, local leveraging strategy can really leverage a lot of dollars. And we'll report back to you, but the application is submitted at this point. I would report to you that Amtrak President and CEO, Richard Anderson, has retired.
Hey!
He has been replaced by William Flynn. You will recall that Mr. Anderson did develop the plan to put Southwest Chief Passengers on a bus in Garden City or Lahana, bypass Raton, and put them back on the train in Albuquerque. And we strongly disagreed with that plan. Mr. Anderson has moved on and retired.
See, 2020 is not completely bad.
That's right.
Just a, Mayor and Commission, just a, I'm going to save this for last. I'm going to move down the list here. July 6 is the proposed date to start the resurfacing project on Fifth Street. We don't designate North Fifth Street or South Fifth Street, because it really is the entire length of Fifth Street. And that will be done by the chip seal process. Public Works Department has been working on patching and cleanup, removal of sediment in advance of this work. And we would ask the public to please cooperate with that by removing parked cars when the crew is in the area. And that includes both the sediment removal crew now and then the chip seal crew when they get here on July 6. Jason, am I correct in the July 6 date?
Yes.
We did conduct a pre-construction conference this morning on the Great Blox Project with our contractor. That's HO Construction. That's the same contractor that completed the initial phase. Looks like they're ready for a pretty quick start. We would anticipate that we would start construction within about 10 days or within the month of June at any rate. And so, we have some familiarity with HO. They did a pretty good job for us, and they walked the project today in preparation of the project. And then, construction will take some time. It's a pretty big project. You'll remember, that's about a million-dollar construction budget on that project. So, we'll report back to you as we go. We did schedule a pre-construction conference on Friday for the transfer station with that contractor, Archileta Construction. We also are anxious to get work started on that. So, we anticipate the commencement of work before the end of June and run through next March of '21. There is smogging work at Lake Malloy. That's the geotechnical boreings on the spillway area that we had talked about before. Seismic work was completed earlier. The boring is for engineering analysis purposes, and it's related to the inadequate spillway capacity that we've identified at Lake Malloy. So, that's going on. We would install instrumentation in those bore holes. We'll install posimeters and keep track of seepage in that area. But we're learning a lot about formations there that we really didn't have information on before. And then, I'll wrap up with this note. The Census Bureau has recommenced their activities with the, related to the 2020 census. They resumed delivery of response packets. And I checked Raton's response rate. It's 47.6% today. That's not very good. And so, we would encourage our citizens to respond to the Census Bureau if you receive an invitation or receive a response packet. If there's someone out there who has not received anything from the Census Bureau, you can call us here, and we'll try to help with that. But you simply go to 2020census.gov. Very easy process. It tells you how to get connected. And you can respond online, by phone, or by mail. So, they made the process very easy. We really need everyone in Raton to respond. Some of the leading communities are at 70 or 80% response rate, and we're at 47%. So, the clock is running on that. We want to get everyone counted. Of course, that is extremely important to potential funding for Raton in the future, and that really is for a 10-year period. So, this is a milestone event, and we would encourage everyone to respond. And if we can help, we certainly will take your call and try to help. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
Before you sit down, Mr. Berry, how's the little taproom at the Schuler lobby? How's that coming?
That project is under construction. It's not, has not moved along rapidly, but construction is ongoing. And the thing I could tell you about that is that we have, we found some surprises in the electrical system when we did the demo work. So, there was a change order to meet code with the electrical system, and that's taken, has added a little time. And it will add several thousand dollars to the cost of the project. However, I think we're done with that. We're looking at some lighting options there that still need to be worked out. The work has been slowed some with some color choices that is being made by the Schuler Restoration Board. I did not have a chance to talk to them this week, but I'm hoping that those choices have been made and the material is ordered and coming. And then, it'll come together pretty quickly. So, we still look at a completion date, probably in early July right now. But other than that, there's not been a lot going on at the Schuler, so it really hasn't hurt anyone's feelings. But we hope to get back to some, some operations there, and I think it'll dovetail pretty well with the uptake of potential operations in July.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Further comments? Commissioner Chatterley? Mr. Giacomo?
My name.
Mr. Chavez? Mayor Pro Tim? Yep. I've got a New Mexico Municipal League Board meeting Friday that will be virtual and live. I've got an executive board meeting there Thursday evening, so I'll be down there. But the rest of participants, I think, will be virtual. Other than that, that's all I have. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.